America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is to accept the agendas. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Kathy, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. The next is approval of the July 26th special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve July 26th?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Second by Kathy. Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is a regularly scheduled meeting on August 2nd, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy and seconded by Kitch. Again, any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll wait a second. The next item is communications and correspondence. I don't have anything at this point, but at the end of the meeting, I have some updates for you. So, and any questions, we can refer to under follow-up. The next item is public comment. Any public comment? Mr. Jarzabek?
I'd like to speak.
Sure. Want to take the podium? We ask that you just tell us your name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Jarzabek. I live at 216 Summer Street here in Portland. And I guess I'm here for some clarification. I have a dilemma. I put a new driveway in my house on Summer Street. I live on the, I guess I would call it the east side, more towards the Bartlett Street Extension, or the intersection. And I had a sidewalk going across when I built the house, and I put it back in. And between the differences of the cement sidewalk and the asphalt, two different materials, expansion, contraction, whatever, and I'm a fussy person, I'll admit that, it didn't hold up. It didn't hold up for five, six years. There were some problems with the contractor also, I'll admit that. And I'm doing it over. And I'm looking for an exception to leave the cement sidewalk off and just put asphalt from my garage doors to the street. I talked to Susan about this on Friday for about an hour and a half. I've talked to Mr. Rick Kelsey. Some confliction here, in my opinion. But for me, it won't work. What I've looked at, I've gone on Summer Street and then looked at the rest of the Kelly subdivision, which is the condominiums, which I am not a part of. My property has nothing to do with the condominium association. It was never part of it. Out of 10 houses that have 10 common driveways with sidewalks across them, seven out of the 10, the sidewalks are in terrible shape where they cross the driveway. Probably because the rubbish trucks, garbage trucks, the propane trucks, when they deliver, they pull across it and they break it up. If it was all asphalt from the back of the driveway to the road, I feel this wouldn't have happened. I'm no expert, but that's what I feel. I have talked to the experts. Susan sent me talking to this one, talking to that one, looking into this, looking into that, and everything that I found out comes back the way I thought. That, you know what, the best job is all asphalt. When you take two different materials and you put them together, it doesn't work out. My thought is if you've got a level surface and you're going from sidewalk, asphalt, sidewalk, and you're maintaining it, and you can put a wheelchair across it, a baby stroller, whatever, without any bumps or humps or whatever, it's a fine job. When you put that sidewalk there, the cement there, and then you put the asphalt up to it on either side, and you have that expansion and contraction, never mind the deterioration from salt, when your vehicle comes in and drips the salt from the state highways on it, and as far as it and whatever, it's no good. It doesn't last three, four years, they're a mess. You can go down Summer Street, you can look at the 10 houses that I looked at, including my own, and look at the mess. Now, you can go to places, other places in town, including the town of Portland, you go up High Street, which I believe is the most important sidewalk in town. Accesses three schools. From the new medical center to the Swedish cemetery, there's 28 properties, three owned by the town, that are all asphalt to the road. No cement sidewalk. And there's no problem. The newest two properties are the medical center. They come out, they have sidewalk to the right, sidewalk to the left, and a beautiful paved driveway in the middle. No sidewalk across it. Across the street, Portland Electric, same way. Sidewalk, sidewalk, asphalt. No cement across it. Why am I being treated differently until I have to put a sidewalk back in? It's not feasible. It doesn't work, you know, in practice. You gotta be practical. It's the year 2017, money's tight, the general public, maybe the town of Portland get grants and money from the federal government or the state government to do stuff over every 10 years. I can't. You can't. So we gotta do it right the first time. And I want to try to do it right. I try to do everything right. Every blade of grass on my lawn is in place, and people can attest to that. Something needs painting, it gets painted. I don't halfway do it. I'm not looking halfway to do this. But I haven't got clarification. I went into the town clerk's office and got something from Brian Curly, which is just basically streets and sidewalks and footnotes and how to dig. At that point, I went to the building department. They sent me across the hall, and Rick Kelsey gave me the way it's supposed to be done, if it's done this way. But not why. And why can't I use asphalt? If you go in Webster's dictionary and look up the definition of a sidewalk, it says "an area to the right or left of a road for pedestrians to walk on a paved area." It doesn't say what it's gotta be paved with. So I'm looking for permission to do the same thing the town did. The water tower, newer driveway around the same vintage as my driveway, into the water tanks next to the high school. Asphalt. Clearly, they eliminated their sidewalk, put two feet of new sidewalk on this side of it, and two feet of new sidewalk on that side of it. When they plow it, no problem. The plow don't catch, it don't chip it, it don't bump it, and it looks beautiful. It's probably been there seven or eight years. There's no cracks or no mess in it. Look at mine. Joe Malardo, a former employee of the town of Portland, put in a new site, or new driveway for his girlfriend on Summer Street about three years ago. It's just three years old. We talked this morning. He couldn't be here tonight to attest, or, you know, speak for me. And he says, Johnny, he says, "It's all broke up up near the sidewalk." He says, "I can't believe it only lasted three years." I said, "Well, what do you think it was, Joe?" He's the same thing, he says. He says, "You shouldn't put asphalt next to cement." In some cases, it can work. In commercial applications where you have a cement apron, a cement sidewalk, cement here, and it's business. They can afford to tear it up every 10 years. People, the general public can't. And I'm trying to do it right once. I'm trying to make it when the baby stroller goes across it, or the wheelchair goes across it, it's smooth. You drive anywhere around town, if you see, I can't speak for all of them because some of them are mess. I mean, there's messes everywhere, but, like, the driveway going into the water top, the water tanks, it's beautiful. Baby stroller, wheelchair, go right across that, perfect. If that were probably sidewalk there, when they plowed it or whatever, I bet you in the amount of time it's been there, it would have problems by now. The new medical building, they were, that's a commercial building. They were allowed to put asphalt with no sidewalk across the street. The Portland Electric, it was gonna be napped before that. A commercial building. They didn't have it. Why do I gotta do it on a residential street? The High Street carries more people on it every day than my street probably sees. What they see in a week, my street probably doesn't see in a year, the number of people walking on it. And they've got 20, 24 driveways, as I say, from the medical building to High Street, that have asphalt across, or cement, should be. And many of these are new driveways. They didn't call up and ask for permission like I did. They just went over it. Haven't been caught yet. No one spoke to them yet. So me being the nice guy, figured I'll ask for permission. Where, I probably would've been better off just doing it and asking for forgiveness. But I'm not. I'm trying to do the right thing. And I just want clarification, and I want to know why. Why can't the medical building do it? Why can't the town of Portland do it? The other two properties the town of Portland own that are asphalt are Gildersley or Valley View School and the high school. Maybe they consider them roads. I consider them driveways. But there's not cement across them. It's asphalt. And they're holding up.
Actually, on the high school one, they use, part of the sidewalk is asphalted up.
The whole sidewalk going up the side for the kids to walk up is all asphalt?
I'm not referring to that one. You are right. But I'm referring to the one that ties in the actual town walk in the front on High Street. That's asphalt for the first section.
Yeah, the first six or eight feet.
Correct.
So, I'm just trying to do the right thing. I keep things neat. As I say, the normal person that was living in my house, that put it in the driveway six or seven years ago, probably would've said, "You know what, everybody else's sidewalk is junk. Who cares? They cut their grass and they go golfing. The neighbors come by, they walk their dogs, they got urine stains in my grass. I got signs up, keep your dogs on the sidewalk." I don't want the urine stains in my grass. I mean, but you're welcome to walk on the sidewalk. But I keep my stuff neat, and I want it to last. You know, a poor man can only afford to pay for it once. And I'm paying for it twice already. And if I do it the way the town wants it, puts the asphalt in and puts cement in, I'll be doing it a third time. How many times can I afford to pay for it? I can't get your grants, your free money. Which, all that free money you're getting, probably should be going to the education budget in the state, you know what I was gonna say?
Clarification, it's not free money. This is state grants primarily, John, and you pay for it. It's not free.
Whatever. I mean, it should be...
It's not free.
When we're talking about teachers' pensions and everything else, I think there's more important things to spend money on. But I'm the same way. You have a budget, you have money you can spend things on. I have a budget, I have things I can spend money on. And like I said, a poor man can only afford to pay for it once. I've paid for it once already. I'm willing to pay for it twice. I even said, "I'm willing to take the expense of the cement. Let me just do it my way. Whatever the cement would cost me for those three yards of cement, I'll give the town of Portland the money to use this money towards the sidewalk somewhere else where they really need it." And that's what I'm looking to do here. And I'm looking for clarification, I guess, and permission.
You didn't get permission from Public Works or from me, and one of the reasons, and I think the selectmen can take their time and look at your street. It's, the sidewalk is consistent on Summer Street, and that's the way the plan was for when that was put in. I'm not gonna go into any additional details. We're not prepared to give anything tonight.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, my properties, I know, was not...
Can we break another time, or?
I can, I can speak to a couple of questions if you'd like.
Okay. Or we can do it at another time. It's not on the agenda, but...
Well, I've known John, and like he says, he's one of the neatest guys in town.
Yes.
Beautiful, he's very particular, always was, always will. When John had come into me, and I don't disagree with many things that John has included. And unfortunately, over time, there's been, for example, in John's case, that subdivision requirement back in, whatever, well, eighties, late eighties or early nineties, was the planning department, planning and zoning required a side. So there was a sidewalk continuously along the whole perimeter of that subdivision that's intact. And when John asked me, I kinda went down and I looked, and I said, "Jeez, you know, it was a requirement. I understand John's dilemma." He said, "Can I put an asphalt driveway?" And I said, "Jeez, John." I said, "If half of it was, if it wasn't a requirement at the time, and if half of those were asphalt and half of them were concrete, I might be more inclined to grant permit to do that. It would be contrary to really our regulations." But, but in John's case, every house on that side is part of that subdivision does have a concrete side. I'm not saying it's quite wrong or indifferent. In other cases, I've had the request where it's an older street, and the reason you have sidewalks on some areas and others is the age of when it was done. I mean, there wasn't a requirement, for example. The regulations have changed, so, so some driveways, and if it's a case on a street where 80% of them are old and asphalt, then, you know, I might be so inclined. I've had those requests where it's an old case. But in John's case, unfortunately for John, is every, every one of those approved lots has a concrete side. The other thing I'll say is, to some degree, that, you know, we're, we just installed brand-new sidewalks. You know, if you look in front of the school, when we installed the concrete, they're concrete. They're concrete aprons. The entrance to the school is concrete. The entrance, you know, we have a lot of concrete around the school buildings, which we do saw on. Again, so, there's two sides to every story, and I certainly understand what John is saying. But, you know, as an explanation, you know, I'm careful when a subdivision is approved with a sidewalk, it's not really up to me to say, "You can remove." And, and as I told you, I try to be as consistent as I can be practically with everything. And we're not. And I do agree with you that most likely, it was an oversight I probably should have when we, the case of the water tank, for example. There was an asphalt apron there for years since the tank was built, 1966, I think that probably existed. And when we did that, there was no asphalt driveway at all up until the time we did the tank. And at that time, I replaced, I had replaced the apron and I extended the asphalt all the way up the tanks. So there was an asphalt apron there a long, a long time, probably, I don't know, prior to the sidewalks or not. Gilders, Valley View School, go back to whatever, probably the one that was built, and I think that was always asphalt.
I don't have no problem...
I'm not making excuses.
No, no, no. I don't have any problem with that being asphalt, because I feel that's the right way.
Well, I'm not sure as it is or isn't. I think, I think you'll get differing opinions from who you talk to. Many people feel that concrete is more durable. And in my experience, sometimes concrete, if it's installed properly, it's the right mix, it has the right air, it stands up very, very well. If concrete's not put incorrectly to begin with, it falls, it does all kinds of things. So I think you'll find there's some very good concrete sidewalks, good driveways, and just so you know, and I, John, and I've discussed this, our standard for a sidewalk that crosses a, that is a driveway, what I call driveway sidewalk, is a heavier section. A standard sidewalk is five inches thick without wire. A concrete sidewalk and a driveway is eight inches thick with wire. So there's a different, there's a different standard for it. And I don't know exactly what was put in back when your subdivision was approved, or why it had it stood up.
Well, I just want to clarify...
And I do agree with you, John, that salt does have a bad effect on concrete, so...
I just want to clarify that I'm not part of that subdivision, and that those four lots were never granted to Kelly as part of that condominium. Why he ever continued that sidewalk across those lots, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it was, he felt, figured he was gonna get it as part of the subdivision, but I was never part of that.
Was there a sidewalk there, John, when you built?
Yes.
The concrete sidewalk that was installed?
By Kelly. Probably assuming that he was gonna get those four lots as four more condo buildings, and he never was granted that, so it never became part of it.
I want to add that I was approached by the sidewalk committee. We have a sidewalk committee that's going to be working with Public Works and Grounds in putting in the new sidewalks from the bond authorization. They are running into a lot of questions, not the least of which, and something that Rick and I have been working on too, is trees. And as we replace these sidewalks, are we gonna do something about trees, and how are we gonna complement that? And they may even have had some other questions. I was not able to attend their meeting.
Well, going back to my problem...
So, we will be speaking with the committee. I know there's a lot of issues about sidewalks that we've talked about.
Right, trees are not, trees are not my issue. That's a different...
I understand that. But you are talking about standards associated with...
Right.
Sidewalks in our town, as well as driveways. Now, we have a standard that was in place for your subdivision there, and we're trying to be consistent. As Rick pointed out, we're not perfect.
No, we're not.
But we have tried to be consistent in replacement.
Let me finish now to say is, I still feel, my argument would be is, I'm not part of that subdivision, because it was never granted, that Kelly was never granted those four lots as part of the condominium. They were sold off separately and not part of it. And there was a walk there, I'll give you that, and I think it was put in as an oversight, thinking he was gonna get that. I don't think Mr. Kelly would've spent that money if he knew he wasn't getting it. Second off, my sidewalk goes to nowhere. Even though they said they wanted it in the development, if, on the southerly side, on the Bartlett Street end, it takes it right where the bad corner is coming on to Summer Street off of Bartlett Street as you're going up the hill. It takes a right, at the last condo, it takes a right turn, right into there. When there's foliage on the trees there, if some kid or somebody comes up around that corner 40, 50 miles an hour, someone's standing there, you're gonna get clipped.
And that is one of the issues that the sidewalk committee has discussed.
And the other end...
You've got to continue sidewalks.
The other end, drop, the little tobacco houses that used to be there, that are still there, the sidewalk just drops off at the edge of the property there. It doesn't continue. So it's, basically, I think that sidewalk was intended for the use of the condo owners to get back and forth, because that's all, was all common land. My land is not part of that common land. And unfortunately, there's two condos on this side of my land, and there's eight more down on the other side of my land.
I can, I can put on a future agenda, future topics associated with sidewalks?
Well, this is my, this is my next agenda.
And I'm getting a nod from the selectmen on that. So did you want to finish up your comments, John?
Well, the last thing I want to say is, I don't, I don't want, I want to proceed with this and get done in a timely fashion, like, in the next four to five weeks. I want a driveway in, I want a decision made, and I want it all done by, you know, I don't want to be, try to do this in December, or blow in my snow with gravel into the middle of Rick Kelsey's road by mistake or something, and break someone's... I want it, I want a decision on it. You know what, if this was April, I wouldn't care so much. But we're in September.
I don't want to, I mean, we did give you a decision. You don't like it.
You're right.
So you're coming to the board of selectmen.
I asked, right, as I said, I went to get answers, to see where. And I, like I said, Rick...
Ben, did you, or was it?
That was me.
Ben?
I guess before the next meeting, all I'd want is, I'm a firm believer in, let's read what, do we have, is it an ordinance, Susan? What is dictating the material? That's back to, I was listening to what you were saying. You said you...
I'm not prepared to give a full present. I don't have everything with me, Ben.
No, 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 I meant for the next meeting. I meant for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's where, I'm a firm believer in, the devil's in the details. Let's read what we have on the books.
Sure.
Because clearly, like, the medical building's a great example. Thank you for bringing that. I'd like to read it, and maybe, maybe, maybe it does not specify that the drive, it has to be concrete across, and you have some legitimate...
Well, even if it does specify, if it doesn't work in the long run, and as I say, the proof is in the pudding with the other 10 driveways that are in the condo association here, and you can go examine them. The sidewalk to the right of the driveway and the left of the driveway is fine. Where the cars and trucks go over it, where the two pieces meet, the driveway's a mess, and the sidewalk's a mess. It doesn't work.
I think it's a two-part thing, and we don't have it in front of us. I think, number one, we have to figure out what's, what is written and what it says.
And I, and I will repeat...
Yep.
That, that is exactly what the sidewalk committee is trying to do. And they are looking at these things as well.
And, in all fairness, I don't, I care what the ordinance says. I don't really care what another group...
You don't care what the sidewalk committees?
They didn't write the ordinance, absolutely not. And they're not interpreting it, no. I would say, we need to read our ordinance. So that's number one, and we have to figure out what it says. Number two, if we do want to change it in the future and do like what we did at the water tower, do like what we did at the medical building, and allow you to do it, then we should make sure we clarify that ordinance, if it's not already clear. So I think it's very simple. We need to get the ordinance, we need to read it, we need to read what it says, we need to talk as a group, and come to a conclusion. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on. That's okay, everybody? On to appointment of assessor. Richard Lasky is here tonight. Welcome, Rich. It's nice to have you. We have reviewed, we interviewed three candidates, and Richard was, is the top candidate. I'll read a few of his qualifications. You may remember, Richard, he was our assessor in February, through February of 20, from 13?
December, yeah.
And, yes, through 14, through December 14. And from December 14 to the present, he has been the town of Monroe's assessor, and as such, he's responsible for the accurate, unbiased valuation of all real estate, motor vehicle, and business, personal property accounts in the town, and utilizing proper legal valuation methods in accordance with state law. He has served as a town appraiser and a deputy assessor from '07 through '13. He also has worked as a residential and commercial data collector and reviewer for Coal Layer Trumbull, which is now Tyler Technologies, is the company that does all of our revaluation, and has done the last few for us. And he, as such, had also visited Portland and done some of the field tickets. So you're a friendly face to Portland, and we're very, very pleased to bring your name to the selectmen, and in accordance with the charter, it is the selectmen's approval of the nomination that I bring to them. So, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, Rich?
Like I said, I'm happy to be back. It's, you know, I, it was, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, it was like, well, we've got a lot of good stuff coming down the road, so, you know, it's gonna be great to be part of all that. And, you know, like I said, I'm happy to bring my, I think I bring the table as far as, you know, helping potential startups and kind of get through our, yeah, the revaluation, that kind of stuff that we have on the table right now. It's, you know, some pretty good challenges up ahead, but at the same time, you know, looking forward to getting to that, all that, and, you know, it's great to be, it's an honor to be invited back. So I thank you guys very much for the consideration.
So entertain a motion. It's a move by Kathy, is there a second?
Second.
By Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, you are a new assessor. Rich is going to start on September 11th, and as he pointed out, he is facing a lot of challenges, I think, in particular with our pending development at the former Elm Crest Hospital. It's something that I think was of interest to Rich to get involved with that, as well as completion of some of the suits that have been brought to the town, as you often see after a full revaluation, which we had as of October 16. So, we're thrilled to have you, and we're gonna put you at a hard work very soon. So congratulations, Rich.
That would be great, honestly.
Welcome.
To be back part of it.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank our finance director, Tom Robinson, for helping in recruitment and also in interviewing Rich and convincing him that we really are the best place for him at this point. Thank you, Tom. All right, we will move on. The next item on the agenda is animal ordinances and animal control officer. One of the things that I wanted to do tonight is have this on the agenda. Mrs. Rutter had asked us to give some consideration to animal ordinances, and while I don't have any changes specific tonight in the ordinance, I did want to hear what her suggestions were. She had been here previously. And then, based on that, I will bring back information to the selectmen as we proceed through that ordinance. So, Sarah, did you want to make some comments for us? It's Sarah Staryrutter, from East Main Street.
Okay, I guess this, most of you were here, last time I was here, speaking in regards to the situations going on in my home. But besides that, I have great concern about the citizens of Portland, understanding what their own rights are as property owners when people are walking their dogs on the public sidewalks, and what a property owner has for rights and whatnot. And when it comes to reading the ordinances, it gets, there's a lot of ambiguity here in regards to what our town ordinances are, and the state ordinances are, and which ones they choose when they issue a violation or a ticket. And, so, I guess the best way to do is refer what's going on with my home, because, obviously, we were giving a ticket for nuisance, and we were also given a ticket for roaming. They subsequently removed the roaming violation, which means that they either were appeasing us, or they agreed that my dogs were in their own yard. I think what people don't realize who walk their dogs, whether they're on a leash or not a leash, and yet we do have a leash law, they can still, their dogs can still be roaming on somebody's private property, even if they're attached to a leash. So if they don't keep their dog on the sidewalk as they walk, and they allow that ten-foot or that twenty-five-foot lead to go out, that there is technically roaming. And they may in fact be creating the nuisance themselves by allowing such actions of their dog. Now, you can't fault the dog for that, because the dog is being supposedly controlled by the owner. But again, when we received this ticket, it seems like we got a ticket, but did they also reassess the behavior of the person that was walking their dog? Were they within the rights of the law? Their dog was on a leash, but was the dog roaming on somebody's property? And I think that when we look at the ordinances of the town and the state, there is gray area there, which is confusing, but I wouldn't want anybody else in town to have to go through what we are. I mean, I'm in my fifties, no problem, but what if this was a sixty or seventy-year-old or an eighty-year-old person, and somebody roams in the yard? If the dog had come in my yard and bit my daughter, it'd be a different thing. But the dog didn't bite my daughter, so now it's like, who has these rights, and how do we protect ourselves as homeowners with our property lines? Do we have to put up signs because nobody knows what a property line is, and where you are as a citizen, to be respectful of other people's property? When we look at the two, when we look at the two nuisance regulations, the one from the state has very clearly defined words that they're using versus the one that we have for the town. The roaming nuisance for the town of Portland says, "No owner or animal shall allow such animals to create a nuisance or roam at large within the town, while it is not in control by means of a leash or the owner or agent of the owner, provided that nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or prohibit the use of hunting dogs during the opening hunting or training season, or any animal while performing or being exhibited in a bench show or exhibition." That was A. B is, if an animal is found at large in violation of this, it shall be impounded by the animal control officer, and C, violation of this section shall be punishable by a fine of not more than a hundred dollars. That is simply the roaming and nuisance ordinance of the town of Portland. The roaming nuisance for the state of Connecticut, which was the one that they used when they issued us our ticket, reads, "No person shall own or harbor a dog or dogs which are of a nuisance by reason of vicious disposition or excessive barking, or other disturbances, or by such barking or other disturbances, in or are a source of annoyance to any sick person residing in the immediate vicinity." Very different words than the state. And that's where, when I was here the last time, it seems like they are trying to assume that my dogs are vicious, because they chose that ordinance versus the town's. The rest of it reads, "Violation of any provision of this section shall be an infraction for the first offense and a class D misdemeanor for each subsequent offense, and the court or judge may make such order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog or dogs as may be deemed necessary." So there's very, very different words, and very different meanings, in my opinion, of these two ordinances. In conjunction with that, you have the dogs roaming at large, international or reckless subsequent violation, which the state has for damage to your property, and Portland doesn't have an ordinance that regulates that, which says, "No owner or keeper of a dog shall allow such dog to roam at large upon the land of another and not under control of the owner or keeper of the agent or the owner. Not allow such dog to roam at large on any portion of public highway, and not intend or under control of such owner or keep his agent, provided nothing in this subsection shall be construed to limit or prohibit the use of hunting dogs." So again, they're talking about whether you're on a leash or not on a leash, you can be construed as roaming, as well as, then that moves into damages. There's another ordinance about damages to a property, to a person or property by the roaming of a dog. So the, all three interconnect, but the words are very distinct. The state is quite clear how they read that. The town of Portland's is not, and I don't think that homeowners realize that they don't have a lot of power to protect their property. And the police can't protect us unless we have private property signs up. That's all well and good, I put the signs up, but what does it make my yard look like? Like John, I'm a perfectionist. My yard is very well groomed, my husband put it in a paper driveway, we put in a concrete sidewalk. Two, the dimensions that the town deemed, we actually have eight inches of sidewalk, and we have, no, eight inches on the sidewalk and twelve across the driveway. Sidewalk, we did rebar and fencing throughout our sidewalk, because we knew the way our territory would take downtown. So, we don't mind people walking on the sidewalk, but there's a fine line between walking on the sidewalk and coming in our yard and creating problems for a homeowner. And that's just not us. That's anybody that lives in the areas, in towns where your sidewalk is close to the property.
Let's rip a wall off the board.
So, that's where I really want to see some changes.
Yeah, I'll take a look at, I think it's five-three, ordinance, chapter five.
It's five, yeah, section five dash three, roaming and nuisance of animals.
And the nuisance part of other dogs being nuisance.
Well, that's all five-three.
Roaming and nuisance, yep.
But then, when you go to the state, the state, it's section twenty-two, three-sixty-three, nuisance, and the dogs roaming at large is section twenty-two, three-sixty-four, which then also is, would also go into section twenty-two, three-fifty-seven, damages by dogs to persons or property.
I will take a look at and compare them, and bring something back. The next time we meet is the first Wednesday in October, because the third Wednesday is a religious holiday of September, so we will not be here the third Wednesday of September. Am I right on that? Now, the first meeting in October, we also have another event that we may be touring the Connecticut, actually, the coastline. We've been invited, as selectmen, to take a look at the riverfront. So we'll be doing that earlier in the evening, but then, depending on how everyone is feeling, we'll be back here at seven-thirty.
And if I can just add one thing. As you know, you have this sidewalk committee.
Yes.
So again, now, what happens if somebody is walking their dog on Main Street in front of the middle school, and that dog hurts somebody? Who owns that sidewalk? Who's responsible? And we're responsible for picking up, snow plowing, and maintenance of our?
Those are many questions that we've had at this board.
So, when you combine that with the amount of people, the traffic that walks on the sidewalks, the people that walk their dogs on the sidewalks, we have an issue that really needs some clarification.
I agree. We will work, I'll bring it back. Sounds like we have a fair amount of homework to do. How brief are you gonna be, John? As long as you're brief, I like that.
Two minutes, honey, twenty seconds, you count.
All right, go ahead.
One more thing to add about dogs and these people, and how careless they are.
Yes.
I have a storm discharge right away across my property. It comes down to the bottom of the property here where I had a garden once, and as I have to pick, where I have to pick up, a lot of times trash ends up in a stick wrap or whatever.
Thank you.
And it all comes out, and it ends up there before it goes out into the wetlands. So one day I'm back there, and I'm looking, and I got all these plastic bags. These people are dropping their plastic bags into the catch base, and they do that all the time. And they're making it now, and so there should be an ordinance going into this too.
Thank you.
If anybody in Portland gets caught dropping their bags into the catch base, there should be a hundred dollar fine.
And even if they do it, a lot of you, we could see just big old rubber gloves, and should have dropped the dog into the catch base.
That is wrong, you're not supposed to do that.
Well, that's more than obvious, but if you ask the ordinance shortly, then we would risk.
Yes.
Well, I would rather have it in the catch base than pick up in my bag. I really would.
It's unbelievable. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and you did that, I'll say, in sixty seconds.
I could go on longer.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone else. Thank you, we'll keep working. All right, the next item we have is, yes? Yes, Peggy?
Should I go up?
Sure, go ahead, Peggy.
So, I'm Peggy Gross, I live on twenty-three Fairview. I'm a neighbor to David and Sarah. And I just wanted to share that we've known David and Sarah a long time, they're our dear, dear friends. And these two dogs that they have rescued, we have known these dogs since they have rescued these dogs, and they are the most wonderful of dogs. And we go to their house all the time, we're in their backyard, we go in the, you know, through the back door, through the front door. When I go out with my dog, first thing is she goes right to the fence to greet their dogs. And, you know, my daughter goes in their house, and these dogs are not a nuisance. I mean, we live, you know, right next door, and they're, these are the most wonderful of dogs. And they're so loved, they're so cared for, and it does break our heart that this has happened to them, because they're not a nuisance, they're wonderful dogs, and, you know, we think the world of them. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Peggy. So nice of you to let us know. And thank you, Sarah and Dave. Appreciate that. The next is number nine, and it's a resolution on the State Library construction grant, and I know that our library director is here. There you are. Hi, Janet. Yes, maybe you'd like to introduce, you were here previously, and if you can just highlight for us, Janet Nocia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, some of you were here when, can you hear me? When I talked about a grant from the Connecticut State Library, believe it or not, the State Library has some money that they will give for a grant in the coming cycle, well, current cycle. In November, they will be giving out some dollars for construction grants. Construction in our case would be interior design, some modifications inside. Much of it is purchasing furnishings and equipment, making some cosmetic changes. There is one part that would, well, a couple of things that were big-ticket items included, which would be possibly, if the plant, well, I'll talk a little bit about the plant leading up to this, but we might want to change the way our vestibule is, and we could actually get the doors closer together, which would allow us more floor space, open things up nicely. We think it would solve some issues of crowding near the desk, and some of that's confusing, it's difficult for people with physical issues and things like that, handicaps. So a lot of it is, we're trying to make it easier for people, to be more accessible for people who have some of the, you know, challenges physically of getting around. So along with modernizing, making things easier, we have people charging their laptops and things, and by leaving cords like this across the floors, and we're trying to get rid of that with newer furnishings and newer layout. So we have, the board actually has been talking about kind of updating for a while. We had, they put aside some money for furnishings, but as I started to try to figure that out, we said, every time we try to move something, we're causing some other kind of thing, we don't want to make the pathways more difficult for people, and things of that nature. So we decided we need to hire a consultant, and we asked several architects and designers if they, what they thought, what they could do. And we interviewed a few. We came up with the Monchitrick Associates, who happen to be a Portland-based firm, who has done some work here, and is doing other work in Portland, I believe, and part of the Elmcrest project at this point.
Yes.
So, but they, they actually, we were impressed with them, and they are going to do a plan for us on, you know, laying out of the floor and what we might need. They've done the Barnes and Noble education throughout the country, I believe, through a lot of the area, a lot of the region of the country, anyway. And so they know a lot about the marketing books, how to set things up well for that, and that was one of the reasons we think they'll be a good fit. And we'd like, but they, so they've been hired just recently, and the board has funds that they can cover for that. And that could apply toward the grant match. So we will talk about the grant. The grant has ended up, it's, the project, if we did everything that we want to do and it's approved, it would be a two-hundred thousand dollar approximately project, so the two-hundred and sixteen, I believe, with contingency in there and everything. And it is a matching grant, so it would be about a hundred and eight thousand if all of it came to pass, that would be needed. Now, don't get nervous, because the board has an endowment fund, and they have been saving up for something like this, that would be an improvement that the town, you know, obviously couldn't lay all that out in a year, probably for the library. It also can be done in phases. There are some rules that, once you're approved, if we were approved to have the grant in November, which we hope, and then we'd have actually up to a year to certify that we have the funds. So if for some reason the investments tanked, and maybe not, but, you know, we have half of it, could we raise the other half, something, you know, just different scenarios that might happen, if there were a challenge there. You know, we would have some time to try to make it up, or say, well, we just can't do it, or ask for an extension, whatever the practical thing would be. So it isn't something where anyone's locked in totally. I mean, we did ask, we did say, we have reasonable assurance of the funds at this point, because we do have some of those funds. The endowment fund started when that vestibule was built, so it would be interesting if we got this grant, and it went back into changing it, because it was called the Twenty-First Century Fund, or Second Century, Second Century Fund, I think. And it was, I think it was nineteen ninety-eight when that actually got built, so it was in the nineties, they collected money for improvements, and some of the remainder started this fund, and then with various donations, the Wagner Fund, Magdalena Wagner, who was associated with Elmcrest, which is another interesting tie-in, it's quite with the hospital, that she left a remainder fund that had given, there had been money for scholarships at the high school, and for improvements at the library. And so that went into, there's about twenty-five thousand several years ago that went in. So the money's been growing, and with the good, you know, stocks and things lately, and we had good management. Tom has gotten our money in with the pool with other town investments, so it's been good, we've been able to get things, we don't have to pay a lot of fees or anything, so. So we've got a good chunk there right now on paper, some unrealized gains, we hope they'll stay, hope things keep improving. So if they do, we should be fine, we should get the grant. But, you know, there will be expenses, we can't pretend there won't be, I mean, if we have to go out, we would have to go out to bid for some of the project, and that's not really covered in the grant, certain expenses like that. If there were some contingency on a piece of it, we might have to figure out, would we cut the project short, or could we come up with some dollars, you know? But as I say, it wouldn't be done all at once either. You would expend as you're going along, and then you were reimbursed too. So, you know, if you couldn't do everything, or you need to change something, you can ask the State Library Board if they would accept a change to it for some reason, something weren't feasible, and we wanted to change what we're doing. So they're pretty good about it, so. But that's mostly it. Was there anything else?
I'll put it up for questions from the selectmen.
Engineering review process, you said there were multiple candidates?
There were, we had, we interviewed three, and there were, I think, two or three others. Yeah, there were about five that responded. We sent out.
What's the dollar amount?
About ten.
What's the dollar amount of the contract?
It's five thousand, it's about fifty-two hundred.
Did we go with low, Dick?
Pardon, that was low, it was the lowest. Yeah, actually, some of them were over ten, which we would have had to go out, you know, if they were all, you know, ten or?
That's where I was going with it.
Yeah, and the state actually, yeah, the state has a strict rule too, if we put that in as part of the grant, which we're trying, if it were over ten, you would have had to do the whole process as well. And of course, that's, you know, that's the right wing, the legal wing, yes, we would have done. But we had no idea when we sent it out, how much it would be. I thought, oh, it's like a few thousand dollars, you know, what did I know? So, but they are able to work a little lower, they don't have this big overhead that some of these firms have. We did have three that were under ten, just, you know, so we were good.
You answered what I wanted, thank you very much.
Good, yes, thank you for making sure we're on the right track.
Janet, I have a question too, just on the, in any case, there's a match. Now, is that match, that's a cash match, or is it, does it include in-kind, or what?
Yeah, they unfortunately don't allow any in-kind stuff, yeah. And like, our salaries and everything couldn't be applied to it. It has to be the capital costs, or the consultants and things could be, you know, the architect, or those kind of things, any work done, but nothing on our end could match it, unfortunately.
So the town would come up with X amount, X amount of dollars if you indicated, and then the grant, if it were okay, would supply the rest of the money, that's?
Yeah, they actually, yeah, you have to make your payments ahead of time, and then they will reimburse, when you're fifty percent along in the project, they give you fifty percent back, so they give you a good chunk at that point, but then.
And the library board has said that they will use the endowment, the interest from the endowment. As the match. Unless, as Janet's saying, there's a problem, but at this point, they have sufficient funds within the endowment to be that match. Now, if the selectmen should decide they want to put some from the general fund, certainly that can happen, but the board, the library board, and correct me if I'm wrong, Janet, but the library board said they had sufficient funds within the endowment.
They said they were, they were okay with up to a hundred thousand at this point, and so that's a substantial amount of it, and it could cover it all depending, I mean, these are preliminary figures, and, you know, too.
Kitch?
Yes, thank you. So Janet, I have the same question that Ben asked, but beyond that, I think it's great and it's wonderful that the bond commission has money.
Yeah, it was leftover.
They can't give you two boards of education. So do you, have you prioritized the list of what you want to have done, and how will it impact access to the library? I've been in the library when it's jammed at the checkout, or questions are returning, so I understand the desire to change the entryway. So what would happen when that piece of the library was being reconstructed, remodeled?
Yeah, what we would hope, and again, the architects haven't really done the plan yet, so something could change a bit, but the idea is to allow more space when people are coming in, and some people are going, coming, hanging, you know, they sort of gather as well, or they're doing transactions. It's pretty crowded and noisy, we have noise issues that we'd like to address over at it. So if we can move the desks back a bit, we would try to get new service desks, either fix up what we have, or get new ones, whatever is going to work. I put in enough money that we, if we had to get new ones, but it might not have to be. But we want to move things around a bit, and we would have more space, when someone walks in there, they wouldn't be hit with a desk right in front of them, there might be some orientation, you know, kind of displays or something, and there might be just some opens, it would be more open space for people.
So the desk would actually be recessed a bit more?
I would think so. I mean, again, we have to see with the architect and what's feasible, but that would be one of the likely things. If not, there, it would be recessed just by being further away. If not, there, it would be recessed just by being further away from the door, anyway. So we at least have that, even if we don't move it.
The, the other question I had asked to do with, with the endowment. So at this moment, if everything were to fall into place tomorrow-
Yeah.
-there is $100,000, is that correct?
That's free. Yeah, they, the earning has been quite a bit, there, last I looked, there was over 400 in the endowment. We couldn't, we wouldn't take it all out. There's a certain basis, obviously, you leave a big chunk to keep on, but-
Right, but by policy, they could do that amount, certainly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. The board's done a good job.
Yes, they have. Yes, very good job. And a lot of fundraising they've done over the years. Are you ready for the resolution? Do you want me to read it?
We can wait and read.
Want to read the reading, do you want to move the resolution?
Yeah.
Someone wants the resolution and wait the reading. Okay. And it's seconded by Kitch. Any further discussion by any member of the board? There being none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
For the presentation, appreciate your, and the board's work.
Thank you.
Good night. See you later, Rich.
Thank you. Congratulations.
The next, Rick is just going to highlight for us the need for a draft stormwater ordinance. Rick, could you highlight this for us, please?
I didn't realize it would be so applicable.
That's true.
But it is. In very, we don't have a lot of choice here. In 2004, EPA, the feds came forward with a whole set of law requirements and sort of, and things, and fees associated with those things, and they passed them down to the states, and the DDEP is the regulator of those things, and it's called a general permit for the discharge of stormwater from small municipal separate storm sewer systems, and they abbreviated that to the MS4 program, which you've heard me speak of. And we became part of that in '04. And one of the requirements of that, amongst many other things that we do, is that we have to enact an ordinance that illicit dis, it's called basically, an illicit discharge ordinance that prohibits non-stormwater discharges. And I, working with the town engineer who works for other towns, they had prepared an ordinance that meets the muster of what EPA and the state wants. Durham hasn't adopted this particular ordinance. And it's, without getting into it, it certainly deals with things such as John is talking about, and it prohibits those, and it has enforcement actions associated with it, fines and whatever. And so it's, it's certainly pertinent to some of the things that we've discussed tonight, amongst many others. You know, people tend to change oil over a catch basin, and there's all kinds of things that go into the stormwater system that obviously we want to prevent from messing up the environment. In any case, we don't have much choice. The ordinance that you have, if you have it, is something that has been used, it's been used by other local towns, it's acceptable. And we have an audit, I believe, October 5th, they're coming down to visit and find some stuff probably, and if we can give them this, we'll appease a few things anyways.
If, if, if I'm, sure. Susan Mayer?
Yes, certainly.
How, you know, I read, it says indirectly, sorry, I'm on just section two right in-
Where are you, Ben?
Uh, first page.
Definitions?
Section two, if you, pollutants directly or indirectly, and then they, and other, and I can't remember where I saw, somewhere in here it talks about fertilizers and things like that. So I, I just want to be careful. So someone that fertilizes their lawn and they sheep flow, and all that sheep flow goes to the road, I'll use Courtney Lane as an example, you know, the road we're off of, and it then goes in a storm, are they in violation because they fertilize their lawn?
Good question here, because if I look at-
The way I read it-
Pollutin includes, they say, herbicides, fertilizers, et cetera, et cetera. So I think, quite honestly, it, I think it goes somewhat to intent. And I think the sheep flow off of a lawn, ultimately, that gets to a catch basin, I suppose, again, I'm not a lawyer.
Right.
Probably, that would be much diluted, again, would probably not be something that you would-
Violate-
Violate, you would issue a violation for. However, you know, someone such as dumping what John's talking about in a catch basin, or someone that's changing their own, or back to fertilizers, I mean, if it's a main line, holy smokes, here we go right into the basin, I obviously think that, you know, the intent, I don't think is to prohibit people from using everyday fertilizers on their lawn in reasonable dosages, but I don't know. It's a good question.
But do you, do you feel we should keep indirect? I get, I get direct, that's, that's actually enforceable, that is-
Yes, indirect is, is indirect, I think-
Yeah, I've read this thing cover to cover, and it-
Yep.
There are a couple, couple spots scare me because it gets you down a road where, where we're going to end up talking about-
Yep.
-dog ordinances, and we're going to be talking about sidewalks, and I'm trying to prevent that. The indirect, and I'll give you another example.
Go ahead.
Salt on the roads. Is the state of Connecticut going to be in violation of this?
Well, the state would be a lot more in violation than the town is.
I'm not arguing, but I don't want to go down that road, and I don't think Susan wants to-
No pun intended.
I'm trying to prevent us from going down that road, and I'll give you an example. You know, we have a lot of private communities in Portland that have their own storm drainage systems that eventually do tie into either the town or the state. And technically, if they're using a salt product, they'd be in violation, and I, I-
Maybe you want to qualify this to say, uh, winter road treatment, winter road treatment materials would be a lot-
I personally, I want to get rid of indirect, because-
Yep.
I, I mean, unless you guys explain to me, because that would cover indirect, is going to cover the salt. Indirect is going to cover the homeowner fertilizing their lawn. I can't think where indirect is going to benefit everybody unless, that's why I'm saying it aloud. I may be missing something. If indirect is helpful, I want to leave it.
I think indirect is helpful.
Okay, then, then, then I think we need to at least talk about salt, and at least talk about fertilization of a normal property, not the, we don't want to start, you know, because think about it, if you violate one person on something else, they're going to come in front of this board and then say, well, everybody that fertilizes their lawn is in violation, and you have to write them up right now. We don't need to go down that road, in my opinion.
But don't you interpret indirect, and again, and it's great, I mean, lawn fertilization, I would say, would be indirect as it's not directly going to your storm drainage system.
Correct, but indirect, you can be in violation. Because you're leaving, if, if you go under the first paragraph, direct or indirect water coming in, so if somebody fertilizes their dam, they're lawn that day, and we get three inches of rain, it all went in, they're in violation, because it's an indirect. That's how I-
You're ahead of me, which is good. Where are you now?
Not necessarily.
Well, I think that's where you get into the issue of whether or not it's intentional, you know, or what was intentional.
Well, no, even if it's unintentional.
That's right, that's right, Ben.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on first page still.
Still?
Section two.
Yep.
Discharge of pollutants direct or indirect into storm, you see, you know?
Yes, I see where you're at now.
To me, that opens up a big can that I, unless-
I agree with you.
I don't know.
I agree with you.
I'm just trying to, I get the dog stuff, I get all these illegal pipes going to storm drains, that's fine, and that makes sense, I get the oil changes, the direct viol, I get all that.
I agree with you. I think indirect really could, could, could present a problem, such as fertilizing or roads, or road treatments, yes.
Well, I would argue the town, or the state would immediately be in violation, especially the aquifer protection.
Well, the state, yeah, the state does what they do anyway, so that's, that's okay. They're the one that made the rules here.
Well, not our ordinance, they-
I would agree with you. I, I would agree with you.
So personally, I think we need to work on that. My other thought is, under the water course protection, excessive vegetation?
What page?
Uh, sorry, page seven, section 12. I'll give you an example. If a beaver makes a dam, we can now violate somebody, and they've got to go kill that beaver, or whatever. That's, I don't believe that's our intent, but under this category, if you in any way alter, with any debris, or it's a beaver, fits right into this, excessive vegetation, I don't know if we want to promote clearing along streams, and inland wetland needs to be involved. Excessive vegetation, it's worked, I don't believe we should have excessive vegetation. Personally, you know, I, I own wetlands, and I'm not going down there to prune them, nor do I think I should. I think nature takes its course, and I think it's good for the environment. If we start, you know, insisting and then actually violating people and fining them $100 a day for not cleaning along their streams, I think that it's a worse effect, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
And I'm nervous about the beavers, I don't know what we do about, so I want to, I want to reword section 12 very carefully, because some, there's a couple spots in town that the beavers back it up all the time.
Oh, terrible.
And now we have to start violating the person that owns them to, to kill the beaver immediately, because they're in violation. Once again, I want to avoid the beaver conversations.
Well, just so you do understand that, because we have that problem, and I have to retain the services of a certified fellow, and he has to get permission from the property for us to go deal with those things. So there is a, there is a process that goes with that.
But not anymore. They, you can immediately violate them if the stream is backed up.
Well, I suspect that's another law that-
Okay.
I know that the, you know, game wardens or whatever comes under, I think regulates that to some degree.
I agree with you 100%, but in this, we can violate somebody that has a beaver backing up a road. If that, we can legally start fining them. I don't believe we should have to-
Take a look at that.
It needs to be written differently. Let's see. I guess I'm okay on page six, number seven, demonstrate probable cause, I guess it, we're going to, we're going to assume that's pretty easy, you know, it's, it's vague, but I'm not, I'm not getting hooked on that one. There is one more. The, the last big thing that I do want to change, right now, we're going to have, sorry, page 10, section 15, number one, if somebody's caught in a violation, they can have a request and pay, have an appeal. I think the appeal, instead of going to a hearing officer, should go to the entire board slightly. I think it's better off, I don't mind if you still need a hearing officer or something else, but I believe the entire board of the selectmen should, should be the ones interpreting this and voting on it if there is an appeal. So I would leave all the other language, let the person pay $25 for an appeal, but I believe the body, it shouldn't be one person appointed by the first selectman to be the one hearing the appeal, in my opinion. It should be the entire elected body. Sounds more fair. Fair.
How many, how many occasions would it look to be an appeal?
I would imagine every case or most cases, if.
If you put in the board, the whole board, and like, the position where they have to, you don't have to be, that, I don't know if the future will affect me, but, but future boards, if you're getting, the change is going to affect the, there's an awful lot of business that I think the board is going to be doing, and has been, it's going to interest, my point being, there's going to be one more thing, and they've got to think that through, that's all.
Well, well said, if I may respond. Here we are, we're getting ready to put this in, and you're right-
We're not ready to put this in, though. No.
Right, we're, we're talking about it.
No, I want to make clear on that, yeah.
Yeah, well, here we are, talking about implementing this prior to October before DDEP looks at this, and the reality is, you know what?
It's got, no, no.
We don't have to have-
Let me clarify that. This has to go through a public hearing process.
Yeah.
This is not being adopted. The purpose is, Rick had given this to me earlier in the summer, and this seemed the appropriate time to put it on the agenda, and we are having a review on our stormwater permit. So it is something that Rick gave to me previously, we're in the process, the public hearing will occur, then it's going to come back to us after we listen to what other people say. Then you can make an amendment, if it's substantial, then it goes to another public hearing. So I don't want to leave the impression that this is something that you're adopting quickly.
No, no problem.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but go ahead.
Back to my point, Fred, I think when, when there is a case that is substantial, and a lot of this has to do with industrial and commercial discharges, and, you know what? That's why we're here. And if we're getting ready to adopt an ordinance that is sometimes difficult, you don't want to put it on one hearing officer that happens to be appointed by the, you want to, you want to give it to the entire board that-
The other thing, then, that we do have elsewhere is a citation hearing board. So whenever anyone is fined under certain circumstances, that we do have a citation hearing board. We don't have a hearing officer. We decided a few years ago that it would be a board. It's not this board, it's a citation hearing board. I don't know if that would be appropriate here, but that's something, it's already been established, we could utilize that.
I just think in this case, this is a big deal. I think it can affect a lot of the businesses in town. I think, I think it's very important that the elected officials that are enforcing their own ordinances can weigh in on it. That, that's my opinion.
Fred, did you have something else?
Well, there will be a hearing in the process.
Yep.
This came down, this, as you explained, Rick, came down with Fed State, and you were meeting with, this is a draft, the first step in the, in the draft, and so-
Taken from another town, right? Another town had adopted.
Picked up from the, I'm sure there'll be a lot of comments about it.
Typically, what we do is we put it as you're presented, unless you want to make additional changes. If you make additional changes, it'll come back to you again. So we could incorporate your changes at the public hearing process, as well as others, and then redo it, if that's okay. So we'll take some of the comments that Ben made tonight, we'll do them again at the public hearing, Ben, and hopefully we'll get other people as well. I'd like to suggest that we do this on the second meeting in October, which, let me pull up my calendar, 18, thanks Kathy. We could do that at either 6:30 or 7 o'clock. 6:30 would give you a little more time, yeah. 6:30 here in the, in the Mary Flood Room. So October 18 at 6:30 PM, and we'll notice that as a public hearing on the Town of Portland draft stormwater ordinance. We don't usually have comments from middle-
Oh, I just have a question on, go on, P. Red. Does that mean that me as a homeowner, wanting to do the town of Portland discharge, it's not my property, I would be responsible, I don't need to put the bushes and be, be resolved, just saying I would be responsible for that, that, keep it clean or cleaned up or whatever?
Possible, I don't, I don't, I don't know, we need to look at this, I don't know, that's something that we could-
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'll give you this copy, John, and you can review it if you'd like.
Yeah, I have a copy here for you.
Yep.
Well, I just-
I was going to ask-
You're just trying to get this available to the water.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, before the meeting, there will be- I have to keep the vegetation down and keep it cleaned up, and basically, paint-
Okay, we're going to get back to our meeting, and we will, we will have this available, we'll put it on our website, so kids can see it. And Rick and I'll have copies in our offices, which I think would be helpful. But if anybody, there's one here, sure. Okay, we'll move on to the Middletown Area Transit District Membership Memorandum of Understanding, which I had shared with the selectmen previously. As you know, the Middletown Area Transit has been going through some changes recently. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you have to make a motion to that public hearing?
Yes, yes, I didn't, I didn't realize, thank you. Is there a motion for that public hearing?
Second.
Made by Ben, seconded by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so the Middletown Area Transit District Membership Memorandum of Understanding, which which is in your packets, and I had said to you previously, excuse me, and, um, this gives us, um, a non-binding term to be involved with the exploration as to whether you want to be part of the district. It does not bind you, other than it sets out some of the things that we will be considering if you are so inclined. And it would be City Middletown, Town of Cromwell, Town of Durham, Town of East Hampton, Portland, and Middlefield. And the district is, would be statutorily, you know, there's statutes associated with this. Right now, we are not a member. The only member is the City of Middletown at this point. So Middletown is inviting us to participate in a series of meetings to determine if we would like to become a member of the transit district. So I'm bringing it to you, um, for your concurrence that we sign this MOU. Open it up, Ben.
How soon are they gonna know what kind of shape they're in?
They don't have the audit finished for, I want to say fiscal '16, um, and they, of course, don't have the one ready for '17. So we don't have the full accounting yet. That is certainly a big question in my mind, and I've expressed that with, um, the other members in the meetings that we've attended. First Transit has now a contract, and they are administering the district right now, which is another bus company managing it.
So this would just be for you to go to meetings?
Bless you.
Sort of an MOU that says we're interested formally, and that we would be involved in gathering more information.
Well, I think we are interested. I think we are too. A lot of people take advantage.
Yes. Is there a motion for me to sign this MOU?
Some of.
By Kitch, is there a second? Second discussion. Fred?
Yes.
Second by Kathy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not directly related to this concern in the delivery. I asked, and I know that in the paper, there was a difficulty in attending the actual leadership in Portland. And I thought I made an inquiry about whether, for that information, so that the board gets to that level, and they can look at what the actual Portland regulations is.
Yes, and we do have that.
Okay.
I thought, I apologize if I didn't send it, I thought I had forwarded it, but I do have, um, tonight, I'll go over it, let's see.
Wasn't it in the newspaper? I feel like I read an article, but I think recently.
There, there has been quite a bit in the papers, um.
Was it specific to Portland?
So they list seventeen different stops between Portland and East Hampton. And this would be for a weekday, and it was done by the Council of Governments. And what I'm seeing is from the terminal in Middletown through Portland and East Hampton, and then back to the terminal, net ridership twenty-six.
Twenty-six participants?
Yes.
Unduplicated?
That's what I understand for this.
So that, the twenty-six, though.
Pass that down.
Would that just, that wouldn't necessarily be there supporting folks, I didn't really, really understand.
And it includes, Fred, people getting on the bus in Middletown to come to work or other activities in Portland. So it's not just Portland residents. There will be a public hearing on this, um, the beginning of October. They had originally scheduled it for the 31st of August, but it's gonna be the beginning of October. And they're thinking about reducing the number of routes. They had thought about eliminating the Saturday route, and they withdrew that, they want to keep that. But they're talking about, um, two of the routes during a typical day to be eliminated.
So that would be, I just think that would be something, and perhaps you didn't have a number on it. Would you, um, Memorandum of Understanding have a Portland number on it? But I, I just think you have to look at.
Absolutely.
What we're, what we're spending, and is there a better way to do what we're doing? I know we're doing things already, providing, sure.
No, I, I couldn't agree with you more. And, and while the meetings have been somewhat informative, I probably go away from the meetings with more questions than answers. What I, what I'll do is try to put together some of the information, and maybe there'd even be, now that they have a director from First Transit, maybe she would be willing to come and speak with you, which I think during the course of this year would be beneficial. The other piece of this is the, there's dialerides. So there's the rural routes that go from Middletown to Portland to East Hampton and back, morning, afternoon, and on Saturdays. And then there's the dialeride, for which you qualify based on various reasons. We, the town, pay a fee for both of those, as you'll remember from our budget. In addition, we run our own dialeride through the vans that we have at the senior center. And you'll remember, we just purchased a van in concert with usage with Cromwell. Now, we get reimbursed through a grant, sort of a supplemental for those dialeride rides that our senior director books, and then our drivers pick people up and take them, primarily to doctor's appointments outside of the area that the Middletown Transit Dialeride would take those folks. We were having the Middletown Area Transit reimburse us. They were our pass-through, they did all the administrative work, we gave them the data. For fiscal year '17, so far, we have not received those reimbursements. And for the last quarter, in '16, we did not receive the reimbursement. We have made now at least two written requests for that reimbursement. Verbally, they have said they will, um, they will address our question. So I'm, I have on my desk, and Tom has to, has to also sign it as a finance director, we're gonna go directly and request those dialeride reimbursements from the state. So we will not use the fiduciary anymore of the Middletown Area Transit. Previous to fiscal year '16, am I right, Tom, is it '16 or '17 only? The last quarter in '16.
Or '16 rules, all of '17 rules.
All of '17, so that clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I guess a little weird that you change the, we should really just, they're pretty hard on, they're, it's not where I'm understanding that they're, we're all in. You would think if that was the case, Matt would continue to do it all, and if there are other people that.
But we're not part of them yet, and I don't believe anyone else is using them as the fiduciaries, what I've understood.
I, I guess.
But I get your, I understand what you're saying.
He brings up a great point, do we have to?
Do we have to what?
Use them as the.
If you become a member, it might be a different situation.
Okay, that, and I understand, this doesn't make us a member, and we have no liability at this point. Those are great, great, great questions.
We haven't signed anything yet, so we'll, we'll continue to review that. I just wanted to kind of let you know a little bit about that. I mean, Tom and I are looking at every, as we always do, every dollar for reimbursement. And, um, frankly, the, the change in Middletown Area Transit came over, came about rather abruptly. So did we vote on?
No, we haven't.
We haven't voted yet, so we're still discussing, right? Laura, any other questions on that?
Just, um, I think when I was reading through that, um, there's a provision that says that we can make sure that we're not liable for any prior to joining, things of that nature, so.
That's something that we'd really have to look at. In fact, um, it was stated at our last meeting, Jim, that if you don't, if you don't become a member, and you still want the service, the potential would be that you would be charged for the past dollars. But if you become a member, this is what I was told, that's why I come away with more questions.
Wow.
If you do become a member, and you have written in your contract that you're not liable for those dollars that were owed, you'd be better off. Sort of a carrot.
Because it's a new organization?
It isn't a new organization. It would be part of our agreement. I asked if it could be a separate, brand-new entity.
Yeah.
And they said that they were told it wouldn't be. Now, as I said, there's more questions than answers.
So, so right now, our status is fact-finding, we're going to this, okay.
Yes. Yes, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot to it.
Any other questions?
I'm sure you'll think of, of some other points, and I appreciate your input, Tom, and the rest of the board.
The, the, the other one that's making me nervous is, uh, H2C. Where it talks about if you want, the municipality would then have to pay or secure the amount, or be able to withdraw. I'd like that to be a little clearer.
A little better defined, yeah.
They're gonna tell us what it's gonna cost for us to get out?
Right.
Yeah, and, and what's the criteria for establishing?
Yeah, we need some, so, um, as long as we're all under the understanding, this is just.
Right, it's an MOU, it is not, you're not joining the district. But those are some of the questions, certainly, that we're, we're gonna need to have answered. And I'm sure there's others, too. So any input is most welcome. That being said, are you ready for the question? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
That motion carries.
This next, um, a woman who lives, um, in our water and sewer district, um, came in and asked me about a possibility. Uh, Family Day is this Saturday, please come, I know all of us will be there. And, um, Halloween on Main Street's a little earlier this year.
I didn't get the date, I didn't get it.
Okay, I think I have it. These are important things, when you have granddaughters, right?
And sons.
And sons. Uh, let's see.
Grandsons.
Now what, let me get that to you.
You've called me a lot of things, son wasn't worth it.
Let's see, October. Monday night, so Monday night? Halloween is a Tuesday, so it would be the Friday before that, if I'm not mistaken. I will, I will send it to you, I, I didn't write it in my calendar, so I can, but it's, um, it's a little earlier this year, it's before Halloween.
That's where that little board you talked about by the bridge would be nice, with a, you know, where you change the message board, remember we talked about?
The little, oh, yeah, I know what we're already talking about.
I was just reading an email, one of my relatives is in St. Martin.
Oh, boy.
And, um, they're working down there, and they're safe, so that's good news, yeah.
That's good news.
Terrible stuff going on. Okay, I think that's it. I will get you the Halloween on Main Street. You can always call Mary Pont. She'll have that, too. And the, uh, October 18 for the 14th.
You're talking about the haunted trail?
Haunted trail.
October 14.
Fourteen, thank you.
Well, right, it's the Portland, the zombie run. Portland 5K is in the morning, and then the, uh, the Quorum slash Bark and Rec, um, haunted trail is in the evening.
Uh, Susan, on another side note, have you heard of any deer dying?
No.
Like fifteen of them, my neighbor just gave one, said between, right near the dump, Pine Ledge Farm, and down at Joe's Farm.
Really?
We have three down there. So we, they call the DEP, the D E E P.
Let Karen know, too.
Yeah.
Michelle will call, maybe she'll.
But that's strange to have that many all of them.
Yeah.
So if you guys do see, uh, turkey vultures flying around.
Yep.
Please kind of let Susan know, because DEP is now, why, you seen them?
Watching.
Your wife saw them, she saw them.
We, we obviously have, I swung by behind your house, Jim, to look, I didn't see any behind you, but they're, they're.
You know, it's interesting, is I know, um, up in the northeast, up in Maine, I was there, uh, about a month and a half ago, and I was talking with, uh, my cousin who lives up there, and they're having a problem. They're believing it's something that's tick-borne, and it's killing moose.
Really?
And it makes you wonder whether or not, you know, you gotta look and see if something coming to this region that is impacting.
Uh, must get a telephone, Anderson, he's a big avid hunter and loves.
He's in the fishing game.
And they keep an eye on the population, but he was very disturbed, because he's the one that found a lot of these.
Wow.
Has anyone seen any of the sick animals, or just found them dead?
Correct, just dead.
Just found them dead.
Did you want to give a brief update on '17?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, there's been a lot of work, we're getting towards crunch time. There's been a lot of work that's going on, um, the ball fields, and, you know, the soccer fields, there was some rework that was, was looked at, so the fields can be turned, and they can do short play. So I believe they've got it down to either three or four games now is gonna be able to be accommodated. So the, you know, if you basically turn and you play, um, um, the field's ninety degrees, you can get more games going at one time. That's gonna be accommodated. Um, we've been working with Little League, uh, to make sure we're defining the requirements, to, to make sure that all the requirements are here for tournaments, right? The last thing you want to do is have something that goes in place, and then not be able to have a tournament, because you miss one piece of it. So that's coming along nicely. We're looking to get information to Weston and Sampson regarding the playscape. That committee has met several times over the last few weeks. There was even a tour that was done, I know some folks did, did attend it, yep. Blue area was a busload of kids, and they attended and went and looked at, I think it was five or six parks in the area, various playscapes and things like that, it was a full day in about ninety-five degree heat, so God bless all the kids and everything that were on the bus. But there was a lot of good data in a packet that came out about that. That feedback has been incorporated into, uh, the elements that are being looked at for the playscape, and things are pretty much narrowed down for a recommendation. I think there was some finalization for the five to twelve, uh, I mean, for, for, sorry, for the, um, for the two to five. The five to twelve is pretty much nailed down, as well as the younger. Splash pad, a lot of the components, uh, they've been taking and working on that as well. Taking into consideration not only cost of components, but water budget, trying to make sure there's some efficiencies there. There's some final work that's going on to determine what kind of system. The original system that was designed was a recirculating system. There were some changes with the regulations in the state, that if you did a recirculating system, you had to adhere to rules, um, that govern swimming pools. Problem with that is those rules include having to have showers, uh, full privacy enclosures, things like that, which dramatically changes the cost model and the footprint of the bathrooms. So we're currently looking in, uh, looking now at either, um, single-use systems, or you're looking at systems that capture the water and repurpose it for irrigation purposes. So you gain some efficiencies there, so it would be single-use to the splash pad. You don't have to do showers, don't have to do the maintenance and the cost of building them. Then it's just a matter of what do you do with the water, and how do you efficiently manage that? And, uh, the latest one today, um, had actually a few different meetings this week on this topic, which is the concession stand, and getting down to the nitty-gritty about, uh, finalizing where storage rooms are gonna be, the size of the concession stand itself, and then looking at the components that are going into it. The idea is to wrap all this up, get the recommendations in terms of wants to Weston and Sampson, get them to put it into a package and give us an updated statement of probable cost. That should be, I would say, happening in the next two to four weeks, uh, to keep that project moving, so.
Did we ever learn whether we can, uh, use a, utilize a well on site for the irrigation, if not the splash pad, or the state? Because obviously, if we could, we'd probably want to incorporate that into the project cost. I don't know where that ended up.
I think the, the issue we ran into is the same issue we ran into when we were down at the riverfront, and we were looking at using a well versus running seven hundred feet of line in. Because we're within two hundred feet in the property line, we'd have to go and get us an exception from the state, which changes, um, to use a well on property, because we have water line going by.
Unless it's for irrigation, the, the state doesn't allow for irrigation exemption.
Right, but we'd still have to bring something in for the splash pad, and depending on the system that is selected for the splash pad, um, there's a, there's one estimate from, for example, from Weston and Sampson, um, that indicated that eighty to ninety percent of the, uh, the water, if, when the splash pad's operating, it would cover eighty to ninety percent of the irrigation needs. So there's some potential synergies with doing that. You still get into, into issues if you're using a well, um, with the timing of it, construction, the amount of water that would be needed, you know, permitting and things like that, how much could that potentially delay the project? All those variables go away if we're able to use street water, and if we can use that, you know, you use that efficiently.
My, my only selfish thought, just so you have in the back of your head, is if we did drill a well there, and we found out that it was another large supplier of water, we could then tie it into our system eventually. Because it would be, I feel in time, we are gonna have to do something, but that would be a perfect way of, we now know what kind of animal we're dealing with by drilling a well as part of the project. And then that, who knows, that, you know, the, the way the old riverbed, that may be another great source, may not.
May not.
But we have to look into things, so, that, that was it.
Yeah.
Thank you. We need to revert it from it, then.
If, if it was good.
Well, no, I mean, if you're, if you drilled a well, regardless of if it was good or not, you'd have needed to revert it from it.
Yeah. Okay, last thing, I just wanted to update you on.
Based on the volume that you're taking out.
Is, um.
Correct.
Board of Education capital expenditures for this summer. I think Kitch had asked for this, uh, a couple meetings ago. Completed projects, entryway improvements at Brownstone for thirty thousand three hundred two dollars. Valley View asbestos removal and tile installation, twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Portland High School, Portland Middle School, heating, ventilation, air, air conditioning, building management control upgrade for fifty-six thousand dollars. Valley View pipe damage, which was an insurance claim for a little over two thousand dollars. A lighting project at Portland High School, Portland Middle School, forty-one thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars. Gildersleep sidewalk repair and office painting, three thousand four hundred fifty dollars. This is all from the Building Maintenance Fund, and the total is one hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. They did not paint exterior at Brownstone School for nine thousand six hundred twenty-five. They did not exterior, exterior paint at Gildersleep for twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-four dollars. And that's a total deferred projects of thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I. And I think those are all the updates that I have, and I would like a motion to go into executive session for the purpose. All right, let me finish, purpose of land acquisition, and we are inviting our finance director, Tom Robinson, our attorney is here as well, as well, our licensed environmental professional is here as well, Al Smith is our attorney, and Amy Valancourt is the licensed environmental professional from Ty &amp; Bond. And that's it, right?
Still so moved.
No, go. So moved, is there a second?
Who was the second?
Seconded by Fred, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.